Meeting to order.
We call it to order. We are recording.
All right. So I'd like to call the Duval, the October 6th, 2020 Duval City Council meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Would you please join me for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, would you please take the roll? Could you hear me, clerk?
I can't. I couldn't find my mouse because I have tough screens and I'm like, no, I can't get to my mute button. Sorry, guys. Councilmember Bird Nicky.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lango.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. And if you could please pop up the additions and corrections to the agenda list and then we'll get going on that. All right. So under consent agenda, please add payroll for September 20th in the amount of $155,114.16. Payroll for October 5th, 2020 in the amount of $285,287.49. Claims for September 17th, 2020 through October 6th, 2020 in the amount of $256,867.2. And remove the approval of the September 15th council meeting minutes. This, there was an error that the clerk identified, so those will be coming forth again. And then these were requests from council to move the following items for new business to consent agenda, Agenda Bill 20-85A, resolution for water use. And Agenda Bill 20-87A, AT&amp;T cell tower lease update. And add a new section for approval of council minutes just after the consent agenda. And under unfinished business, remove Agenda Bill 20-35B, Westcott-Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request. And remove scheduled items as those that were able to be be written up were included in the packet. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, Amy McHenry.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. First, we needed to adopt the agenda, so let's scratch that for a moment. I got a little ahead of myself. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, McHenry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, McHenry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council minutes? Clerk, did you get those out to council? Or do you need to declare the change?
For the amended minutes?
Correct.
So I did email those to council for the public. The amendment is to add the excusing Michelle Ho, excuse me, Councilmember Hoag from the September 15th meeting. It was written on the minutes in the additions and corrections. However, I forgot to carry that down to the actual approval of the consent agenda. So that is an explanation of the change. So I need a motion to approve and then a motion to amend, please.
Mike Remington, I move that we approve the amended minutes.
Second, Councilmember Napland.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We need the amendment first. I told you guys my brain was fried already. Bear with me. So we need a motion for the amended, the amendment?
Mike Remington, I move that we approve the amendment to the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Remington moved. Councilmember Napland seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to amend the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, do we have all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye. Are we voting now?
Okay. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to comments from the audience. Ms. Wakeup, I believe we had written comments and people on the line that wanted to participate this evening?
Yeah, the written comments were sent to council. And both of the people who sent them to me did state that they would like to read those comments aloud as well. So I am in the process of allowing all of our attendees to speak. And as soon as that is done, then they can talk. I know I gave you a couple of names, mayor. Would you like to just call on them as you have them or?
I believe there were two, correct?
We had, there was Mr. Sheal. I don't know if I'm saying that right. I'm sorry. Ms. Jaeger and, I'm sorry, I can't remember, Mr. Givens, I believe.
All right. Excellent. I see them all on here. So Mr. Sheal has his hand up, so I'll have him go first. Mr. Sheal, if you could introduce yourself and your address and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Richard Sheal. My address is 6701 West Crestview Loop Southeast in Snoqualmie. So what I'd like to say to the council. My name is Richard Sheal and I've been a Snoqualmie Valley resident for 14 years. I'm a member of a regional group representing Snoqualmie Valley called SCAN, Snoqualmie Community Action Network. Our website is savesnoqualmemail.com. Please visit the site for more details about my comments today. I have serious concerns about a large development proposed for the old Snoqualmie Mill site. This development proposal includes three planning areas covering 250 acres over a 15-year period, with the first phase concluding construction in 2023. This proposed development includes residential housing, industrial space, warehousing, retail, restaurants, office space, and a 5,000-seat indoor and outdoor amphitheater. This project is in the city of Snoqualmie. However, we're all residents of the larger Snoqualmie Valley. I'm concerned with the risk of contamination to the Snoqualmie River and damage to wildlife habitat, as well as the expected increase in traffic along 202 and 203 should this development be realized. Again, please visit savesnoqualmemail.com for more information about these concerns. First, let's talk about the negative impact to the Snoqualmie River. The Washington Department of Ecology has stated that the site needs a comprehensive remedial investigation and has listed this site on the department's Confirmed and Suspected Contaminated Sites List. Underground petroleum tanks and PCB-containing transformer spills are two of the reasons. If we let this development continue, there's a high likelihood of a disturbance to the contaminants located at the site, which will end up in the Snoqualmie River, impacting the ecosystem and the wildlife that we're struggling to bring back to the river. Other point is traffic. DN Traffic Consultants reviewed the TRAFT Environmental Impact Statement, the DEIS. Their report states that the proposal has unrealistic and unverified traffic growth estimates by using studies that do not accurately reflect the current traffic rates on the roads in and out of the site and fails to make any assessments of the impact to 202. Considering how much traffic already utilizes 202 instead of the I-90 Highway 18 interchange, I'm extremely concerned about the increase of both semi-trucks avoiding the scales and the average valley resident rushing home to the upper or lower Snoqualmie Valley through our small downtown roads. My goal is to bring awareness of this new development to our valley and to press the Department of Ecology to properly evaluate and mitigate the old Snoqualmie Mill site before any new development is planned. Please visit our website, savesnoqualmemail.com and read the DEIS comments written by the experts we hired, as well as the concerns that the Department of Ecology and King County have about this development. There's also very informative video explaining the past, present, and future of the Snoqualmie Mill site. I'd be happy to return and give a more complete presentation if this topic can be given more time at an upcoming city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheal. Next, we have, it looks like he may have dropped. Oh, no, he's up top. I'm sorry. Marty Givens.
Thank you, Duval City Council. I'm Marty Givens, a member of the League of Women Voters of Seattle-King County Environmental Committee. My address is 10721 East Lake Joy Drive Northeast in unincorporated King County between Carnation and Duval. King County has recently updated their strategic action, their strategic climate action plan and developed a toolkit to aid King County cities in reaching the significant climate goals our state and region have set. Citizens all over the county are speaking to their city councils, asking them to begin work on their climate action plan if they have not already started. If we all work together on this plan, it can help us mitigate the climate crisis and continue working towards sustainability. The League has been working with King County on the deployment strategy for the new Strategic Climate Action Plan and Toolkit and has identified volunteers in the 39 different cities of King County. I'm a volunteer in that group. We are not experts, but we stand ready to help our cities begin or continue with their climate action plans. We realize that each city has unique opportunities and each will do what they can. And Duval has listed addressing and adapting to climate change in their comprehensive plan. Perhaps you are aware that on October 8th, all city councils have been invited by King County to learn more about the updated Strategic Climate Action Plan as well as the toolkit. I hope that Duval city representatives will attend to identify opportunities for Duval. The League volunteers stand ready to assist the city in reaching the climate goals you deem important and cross-sharing approaches with the other county district teams. The city council or staff may contact me to determine where our volunteers can contribute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. Next up, we have Lisa Jaeger.
Hi, Lisa Jaeger from 4610 Stevens Avenue, Carnation, from the Snow Valley Senior Center. Hey, I just wanted to thank you so much for the COVID grants. They've made a world of difference to Duval older adults. We're serving 1,500 meals each month. The COVID funds that you've given us have enabled us to help those who are medically fragile and who are dependent on Snow Valley Senior Center to deliver them food and groceries. And these funds have also enabled us to provide some one-on-one counseling and support to those who are isolated and alone, partly because of COVID, and especially those who are family caregivers caring for those with dementia. So thank you. Thank you so much. Now, as you're working on the 2122 budget, please continue to remember the vulnerable as you put together that budget. Nonprofits make life better for everyone. We provide local jobs too, so don't stop. All the nonprofits, especially the Snow Valley Senior Center, need your support more than ever. And to just finish up, I just also want to invite you to our annual auction. It's going to be October 17th. It's virtual, of course. The theme is the 1920s. And you'll see some people you recognize as we interviewed some people who were born in the 1920s. And we have costume contests and 1920s trivia and of course, opportunities to bid and to donate. So thank you for this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to our first item of business, and that is a presentation from the Riverview School District Capital Facilities Plan. I believe Misha Robertson is on line for that. Yes, I am here. Jody, do you have a copy of my presentation or do you want me to share my screen?
I do not think I have a copy of your presentation.
Okay. Do you want me to share my screen?
Yep.
Or do you want me to mail it to you? Is that okay?
Yeah, you can share your screen because you'll know when to flip to the next slide, so for sure.
Perfect. That sounds great. Okay. Can you guys just give me a thumbs up if everybody can see the presentation screen over here? Dang it, now I think I have the wrong screen. Sorry. Give me one second. Okay. Now, I think we're good. Okay, so we have, our school board has adopted this 2020 six-year capital facility plan, so we are now presenting it to the cities for your board or for your councils to consider adoption as well. I believe you guys have all received a copy of the actual capital facilities plan to review prior to the meeting. And then, so I'll go through the presentation, then I'll open it up for questions at the end. So just an overview, nothing has changed in terms of our district boundaries this year. We still have the same schools and same district boundaries as previous years. Last year, we had an average enrollment of 3,268 students in our district. And then we still currently have the three main elementary schools, Eagle Rock Multi-Age Program, one middle school, one high school, and then the Learning Center, the Riverview Learning Center for our Alternative Education Program and Parade Program. For the 2020 plan, the enrollment projections are projecting an estimated growth of 1% throughout the district, district-wide. So this just kind of gives you an overview of the incremental increases that we're projecting to see. There's, students are growing from all the growth in the area. We've averaged 1% over the last seven years. We, last year, had anticipated a slightly larger enrollment growth, but with the housing market or the housing development that's happening, we're not seeing quite the rate of increase in students that we had anticipated, so we did scale that back this year from previous years. So we're estimating, we've pulled that back to estimating 1%. And then there has been obviously some impact on enrollment this year due to the pandemic. And so we're not quite sure when we will see that changing and how that's going to impact us in the long term. So we went ahead and felt it was better to scale back our estimates just slightly this year compared to what we did last year. So this is the overview of the six-year enrollment growth per grade and where we're seeing that 1% growth. There's a variation in kindergarten. Kindergarten has to just be projected based off of historical trends because we don't have a roll-up average. And then there's typically a change between first grade as well. And some students don't always start kindergarten and first grade at the same time. And then we see typically a little bit of a variation in 11th and 12th grade as students have the option to change to running start. So that's where you'll see maybe some variances on that 1%. This graph just gives you an overview of the current capacity and inventory that we have in our buildings, the amount of students that we have permanent capacity for, square footage of the buildings, and all of the just the data on each of the buildings that we currently have. The district has currently a capacity need at every level of schools. So in our elementaries, middle school, and high school, we have capacity deficits in all of those in permanent capacity. And so we have helped to solve some of the capacity issues in the short term with adding portable classrooms. But we do see a challenge in the future. We are running out of actual space for portables to go onto our campuses. And so that's why it's important for us to continuously be evaluating what the impact that we're seeing in terms of increased enrollment from the growth in this area. As you all know, there's a lot of growth happening in the area. And our permanent capacity is or every school is at capacity at every grade level. So this will show you the elementary projections and where we're over capacity in not only our permanent capacity, but also in our portable capacities across the district. So we're seeing that. And then until we have the opportunity to build a new elementary school, you'll see that we've slated in 2023, 2024, a possibility of maybe being able to build an additional elementary school that would help to add the most amount of capacity. At this point, we are continuing to use our impact fees to pay for portable buildings each year. Portables are very expensive. And so adding those in each year is eating up the amount of money that we're able to put aside of the impact fees to help to build this elementary school. So if and when we have the ability to run a bond measure and pass it, then we are anticipating we'll be able to add some capacity to that elementary level to help alleviate those schools. The middle school is at capacity again in the permanent facilities, but we have been able to tear down the shop at Tolt Middle School and add in some additional portables that have helped. And we're sustaining at the middle school and will continue to add portables there as the growth continues. It's the school that has the most potential to be able to continue to add portables until we have the means to be able to do a major renovation of that school. And then the high school, the high school is again at capacity. We have added several portables over the past several years to the high school. And so we again have been able to help the capacity issues there with those portables. But one thing that we are facing at the high school is that the common space areas are not able to be expanded with portable buildings. So that's where we really are seeing the capacity issues at the high school. But this just shows you the classroom deficits. So planned projects for 2000 or for the 2020 plan would be to continue to add portables because that is something that we have to do in order to keep up with the growth in the schools. So we have that added in. We also have our capital levy, so we're continuing to do facility maintenance upgrades and technology upgrades for our students. And then you'll see that on the very right of this, you'll see that we also still have projections to be able to possibly have a new elementary school addition onto the high school and the modernization at Tolt when we're able to run the bond measure again. These are substantial amounts of money to do these projects and so they would take a combination of local funding, state match funding, and impact fees to be able to execute some of those plans long-term. How we get to our impact fee calculations is based off of our student generation rates. So our student generation rates are calculated out to determine the average number of students that are generated by single-family homes or multifamily homes that are developed in our area. We currently continue to analyze every year annually whether or not we'll use our own data in our community or if we will use the weighted average of or unweighted average of the surrounding districts. Because we still do not have a sufficient amount of permit data to run these calculations off of in our own community. City of Carnation had a moratorium on building for a long period of time, so the data doesn't go back very far. We still feel it is best for us to use the surrounding areas when calculating out our student generation rates. So that is where we're at on that. This is the calculations and how we come to the cost per student when we are generating students in these places and what it costs us to add capacity for these students and what type of capacity we need to add into the different various schools. This is the calculations that help us get to the proposed impact fees that we're presenting to you guys today. So currently, we are asking to remain, the cities to remain the same in the city discount of 25% to the impact fees for the city of Carnation and the city of Duval. King County has approved a 50% discount, so any homes built in the county are discounted based off of the King County rate. But as we discussed last year with both cities, we felt that we needed to increase the amount that we were collecting to help with the burden of the cost of adding space for our students. So the fees actually went down for the multifamily impact fee last year. The multifamily, or sorry, the single family went down last year. The single family impact fee was $15,406 this year based on the calculations. They have gone down to $13,931. Some of this is in part because our permanent capacity, we had a new study and survey completed this year when we ran the bond measure. We have to update that every six years, I believe, or anytime we are looking to apply for state matching funds. And because we were doing that, we updated our study and survey. And so that came in with some updated data on the permanent capacity. So that fed into the calculations into the impact fees. The multifamily went up quite a bit, went from $8,635 last year to $9,942 this year in the cities. And that is the end of the presentation. I'll leave my screen up just in case anyone needs me to go back, but I'll open it up for questions if anyone has any questions. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. And council, if you're okay with this, since it is really hard to see on Zoom, who wants to speak? Especially when you have presentations up, if it's okay with everyone, I'm just going to go by each council member by position. And if you don't have any comments or questions, that's fine. And then kind of keep doing those round robins till we get everybody taking
And if you don't have any comments or questions, that's fine. And then kind of keep doing those round robbins till we get everybody taken care of. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, seeing some head nods, so hopefully that works. So first off, Councilmember Bridniki, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you. It's very, very, as every year, it's always very informative and somewhat daunting to see the, and we see it, I think many of us have kids in school, so it's definitely an important issue and we look forward to, I look forward to, you know, trying to facilitate the school district's ability to be nimble and adjust to, you know, changes as they come down and hopefully do a good job accommodating all these kids that are here now and apparently coming. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Iyer. Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you for that presentation. It was great. I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Purtem Remington.
And no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hope.
Thank you. No questions.
Councilmember Napland.
I'll keep this quick, but I do have a couple of comments really quick. I did want to say that the I don't, there were a few things that changed in the the plan this year, and I thought it was a huge improvement for understanding, you know, what projects were needing to be completed and how the funding would work. So I just really wanted to be, express my thanks for that. I thought it was great. I did ask a couple of questions ahead of time and I just, I won't share all of them, but the one that I found the most interesting is I was curious about how many how much impact fees had been collected in the last five years and Duval has contributed about 2 million, Carnation 1 million. And what surprised me the most is the unincorporated King County areas also almost contributed a million dollars. It was about 820. So over the last five years, it looks like they have almost $5 million received. And I think that she shared pretty clearly that most of that just goes to, you know, putting some portables in here and there and it, and just looking at other districts, it sounds, districts, it sounds like that is a pretty normal way that it works with impact fees, you know, you just kind of stay afloat and then when you need the schools built, you have to run a bond because there just isn't impact fees just are not going to build a new school, unfortunately. And just kind of looking into this, I don't know if anyone else noticed, but state matching funds are calculated to contribute nothing to the elementary school. And we all saw the numbers about how overcrowded they are and there's not enough permanent capacity. Even I think with temporary capacity, there isn't enough room. And I have a kid in an elementary school and it's crazy to me. And just doing a little more research on this, I wonder if that's something that the city and the school district, if we can advocate for, because when I dug into it deeper, the school matching funds are severely underfunded and that happens at the state legislature level is my understanding. And the calculations they use to decide if you qualify to get these funds, the threshold is almost impossible to reach. And maybe Misha, Ms. Robertson can explain more, but it's for small communities like us, when we're growing rapidly, it, there's very few taxpayers that then have to build these new schools. And, you know, you look at Snoqualmie Valley School District and how high their property taxes have gone. Anyway, I just, I've been thinking more about it, you know, we made a really big effort to increase impact fees to, you know, try to have them development pay a little more of their share, but I don't know if in the end that's going to make that significant of a difference that the average household is still going to pay the bulk of the cost of building a new school. And it's just apparently the way it is, which I am a little sad about because my property taxes are already very high and, you know, I'm trying to think about all my fellow residents here in Duval who are facing the same thing. I mean, my taxes have gone up a couple thousand just in the last few years. Anyway, so I wanted to open that up. Maybe Ms. Robertson has something to say about the state matching funds and if there's anything we can do to to advocate for that, but it just really feels insufficient.
It's definitely something we can continue to bring up. I mean, I think it's always good for us to, you know, keep the conversation going. But yeah, unfortunately, we're, it's, it's, it's just really, we're tied to the way it is at this point, so. And I don't know with with the cuts and stuff that we're seeing in front of us right now, I don't, I don't anticipate it's something that would be changed probably very quickly with them adding more. I do, you know, one good positive thing. I mean, as we, as we continue to grow, we continue to spread the wealth amongst all of us. So, or I guess the cost amongst us. So hopefully, you know, by increasing, you know, the number of people helping to pay for it as well and increasing the amount. If we do have to come to taxpayers, hopefully it won't be as big of a burden. But at this point, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, these communities do carry a heavy burden. I live here too. I have kids here too. I pay taxes here too. So I feel everybody's concerned with all of this as well. And we can, we can continue to bring up all of these things. But I, I fear, I fear what we're facing even just with cuts coming to school districts, you know, with with this pandemic and how long it's going to take and kids are going to come and they're going to be here. So we'll just continue to do everything we can to make sure we have space for them and we're with the city and keep moving forward because we're here to educate the kids.
Thank you. Councilmember Lengel.
Just a comment that earlier this evening, we saw a very robust presentation about our development pipeline. Many of these units have already been permitted. Our staff has done an amazing job of doing that with limited staff. And it is a very, very robust pipeline and sales are very good. So may want to keep checking in on that because you may see that, I mean, I think you will see more units coming online and in subsequent developments. You, I really think you'll realize more impact fees may still go to portables. I realize that's on your side of things, but I think Duval is really pushing development forward as fast as we can. And so hopefully that'll help. But keep, you might want to take a look at that presentation if you haven't seen it already. It's very informative.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Robertson. Real quickly, were, were there any council members that wanted to speak a second time? I'm not seeing any. So I just want to say, you know, what you, what the school districts are dealing with is really unfathomable between remote learning, trying to figure out when kids are going back to school and then dealing with your normal business. The legislature is not very flexible when it comes to education funding and there, I know that there's been a lot of really good reasons for that. And you have your hands full even more so as you can't predict which students are going to do homeschool this year and which are going to do the district learning and recognizing that you also will be losing revenue for every one of those students that that chooses homeschooling. And it's a really tough position for the school district to be in and try and plan for the future. So your work does not go unnoticed and we appreciate everything you do for our community. Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you.
If the bond was on schedule, I'm not sure what you guys, what the school districts plan are to put that out. But if that was on schedule and passed, what would, when would the doors open on the new elementary if that all went the way you.
Yeah, so had we been able to try to rerun it, when we, when we built this capital facilities plan in the late spring, we just built it with the optimism that we would be able to rerun it again this February and have been working very continuously on whether or not we're going to be able to. It's something that we will be discussing with our school board in the next several weeks because we have to make some decisions by mid-October in order to run that. So if we're very optimistic and we can run it and pass it by October or by February of this year, 2021, then we were projecting to be able to build the school for the 24, 25, I believe, school year. Let me just confirm that real quick. If it doesn't, if we don't have the ability to run that, it could be. We just don't know really honestly when, when the next time we'll be able to run it would be, we will have to just continue to monitor the impacts of this pandemic and the impacts of the growth in our area.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you so much. No, that's perfect. That was, that was exactly what I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Any further comments or questions for Ms. Robertson? Seeing none, thank you so much for the presentation again, and thanks for coming and talking to the council in public. So with that, we will move on to our second presentation. We will move on to the 21, 22 preliminary budget. Just to remind folks, as a standard, this is just a high level fund level overview with the budget message tonight. So I will present the budget message and Ms. Mason will go over the high level details. And then starting next week is when we get into the deep dive of the budget department by department and fund by fund. So with that, I will go ahead and begin. So first of all, I just want to say that I'm pleased to present to you today the city of Duval's second biennial budget for the years of 21 and 22. The current biennium has brought many changes to our city, much in the way that we plan for and conduct business. With the implementation of the biennial budget process, we have been able to increase focus on the core services that we provide to the community and have made significant strides to improving base operations, maintain existing infrastructure and achieve real progress towards long-term financial planning for the Siski's city's fiscal resiliency. The city of Duval is a full-service city. Core services of our community include public safety, community development encompassing planning and building, public works, engineering, streets, sewer, water, storm and parks, utility billing and administration. As in the previous biennium, this budget continues to focus on financing unfunded mandates, funding and completing deferred maintenance of city's facilities and equipment and takes us another step further to achieving the appropriate staffing levels that will enable us to continue to provide high level of service our community has come to expect as our population and infrastructure grows. Most expenditures in this proposed budget are status quo and continue a laser focus on the basic needs of our city, infrastructure and community. As a service-based organization and full-service city, our greatest asset are employees. Through targeted training, staffing changes, succession planning and providing opportunities for employee advancement, our staff is becoming more nimble than ever. The COVID-19 pandemic has sent the world reeling with many local governments being forced to furlough and lay off workers due to reduced service revenues. Earlier in 2020, the predictions were dire for significant revenue drops from loss of sales tax, real estate excise tax and field tax. I'm proud to share that we are one of the few cities to be experiencing sustained revenue during the pandemic, allowing us to continue providing annual increases to our incredible employees. As of August 2020, our sales tax revenue is up 5.5% over 2019. When construction sales taxes removed, the city's retail sales tax is up 12.2%. This increased revenue is a result of multiple factors, which also includes new housing development, which provides ongoing revenue from property taxes, strong real estate sales and continued growth in our overall retail sales tax. While many of our food and drink establishments have struggled, they are resilient. Like many industries that have found new ways to provide services to our community investors, we expect the industry rebound to continue in 21 and 22. We have also continued our efforts of fiscal resiliency planning at the previous biennium by maintaining our 17% operating reserve, maintaining a nearly full contingency fund and making huge strides towards capital equipment replacement sustainability. This budget does include the annual property tax increase of 1%, which provides a small boost yearly, but does not cover the increased cost of doing business. This is the only revenue increase proposed and one that most cities take annually. For Duval homers, this accounts for approximately 87,500 for the city and for a home value of $750,000 will mean a city property tax increase of, or tax amount of 997.50, which is an increase of just $7.50 per household over 2020. The equipment replacement fund process has been strengthened with administrative changes in what is tracked, how a replacement cost is calculated and how much revenue must be put aside each year to afford equipment replacements at the appropriate intervals. The new process and planned increased investment of 5% above needs per year charts the pathway to achieve sustainability and resiliency in the fund, ensuring our employees have the tools and equipment necessary to carry out their work for our community. Another way that the bolstering of revenue occurs is the awarding of regional, state and federal grants to the city for specific purposes, typically capital projects. I am pleased to share that the city of Duval was recently awarded a community development block grant for $280,000, which will help fund and enable a sidewalk installation on 142nd Place and provide pedestrians a complete connection to 278th Avenue and access to transit stops on Big Rock Road. This project will directly affect 140 households and more than 400 individuals with the added benefit of continued progress to complete connected sidewalk city system throughout the city. The city is also preparing for design and hopeful construction of the Third Avenue Northeast Road Construction Improvement Project. This project accomplishes improvement of two intersections and would include pedestrian and bicycle elements that will help accommodate and manage increased growth in the southern area of our community. The project would serve approximately 600 residential units and provide a safe multimodal environment. With construction of this project, we can connect the community to the new parks that are arriving in the southern portion of Duval in the near future. We are eagerly awaiting notice of our grant application to the transportation improvement dollars, hope even. Additionally, two new or expanded revenue sources have been approved by voters. Duval will receive an estimated $232,000 over the biennium from the King County Parks Levy II and nearly $600,000 from the 0.2% transportation benefit district sales tax. A significant portion of the 2021 Parks Levy funding will be utilized to support the maintenance of Big Rock Ballfields due to a significant loss of, in revenue during COVID closures. Thanks to Duval voters over the biennium, the city will receive an estimated $600,000 as a result of the 0.2% sales tax. Funds allocated from the transportation benefit district sales tax will be utilized for street overlays, road construction and 80A ramps. Lastly, for our roadway network, in an effort to maximize our new transportation benefit district sales tax generated funding, we are attempting to take grants to complete two of our transportation benefit district projects at a fraction of the cost to our citizens. The grant requested is for $460,000. Revenue not spent during the biennium will be banked to fund future road maintenance projects and be used as a match for transportation-related grant applications. As mentioned, we are making continued investments in our existing parks. In that light, to meet community needs, we have proposed the installation of a sun shade for Big Rock Ballfield Playground and fly ball safety equipment, as well as repair the Taylor Park Wall, a sun shade for Judd Park and the installation of electrical equipment at Taylor Landing Park. These minor capital improvements are expected to significantly increase the usability of the facilities. And in the case of electrical at Taylor Landing Park, provide opportunities for extending the farmer's market and opens the door for future improvements to the asset. The project funding for these improvements come from park impact fees, which must be spent within 10 years from receipt and real estate excise tax. Both have limited uses and cannot be used for daily city operations. Another major investment in our facilities will occur with inflow and infill rotation repair to the sewer system in Old Town. This important maintenance work will decrease the stress on our sewer system during big rainstorms and snow melts and help extend the life of the system. It is a smart investment for taxpayer dollars and will provide a significant economic benefit. Staff has also recommended funding that will enhance our new census water meter installation project to its full potential. New technology via the FlexNet communication network would make it possible to give customers remote access to their accounts and staff control of our water distribution system. The system provides instant and real-time data as well as service changes, including turning meters on and off remotely, conducting on-demand readings and identifying non-revenue water to boost operational efficiency and improve customer service. In addition to the customers improved access, the implementation of this system is expected to save almost 500 staff hours annually. Additionally, this budget makes critical investments in repairs and upgrades to key storm drainage facilities. As our weather patterns continue to become more severe, these projects will help reduce overflow and provide additional environmental As our weather patterns continue to become more severe, these projects will help reduce overflow and provide additional environmental protection. Despite increased revenues, the cost of operating the city will continue rising. Some of the increase will be due to one-time expenses that will create operational and financial efficiencies. Others are the result of increased costs for salary and benefits, step increases and changes in service providers. Government transparency is a personal passion of mine and we have made great strides over the past two years. Proposed in this budget is the purchase of a new financial system, software system that will significantly reduce staff time for developing reports and budgets, give us tools that will allow administration to provide even more public access to the city's finances and finally, provide a permitting tool for our community development department. While the cost outlay is significant, we will see measurable time and cost savings over several years due to the improved and time-saving efficiencies that will be achieved to do the work of the finance department. This will free up staff to work on review and updates to financial policies that will further stabilize the city. My team has been conducting research during the past two years on the city's needs and will be issuing a public RFP prior to budget adoption. Another significant cost increase that the city will be incurring is for legal fees, which have increased by 30% due to the selection of a new security. An additional contributing factor is the necessity of continuing with time-sensitive human resource policy updates, managing the pandemic and mandated or needed policy updates. It is also time to renegotiate our inter-local agreement from IT Services with the city of Snoqualmie. That process will be beginning soon with the goal of finalizing by the end of 2020. In the 2019-2020 budget, it became clear that the city could no longer do more with less. I'm pleased that for the upcoming biennium, we will be able to do more while executing the most fiscally sound budget in recent history. We continue to be significantly understaffed for normal operating circumstances and are proposing new positions to ensure the public safety, maintenance of our sewer, storm, water and parks infrastructure and improve our ability to respond to community needs, administrative help and city administration. These positions are funding with ongoing revenues while special projects are funded with one-time revenues. In addition to the open positions that have been added through the budget minute process or approved in the 2019-2020 budget and are currently on hold, this budget produce proposes the reinstatement of a halftime city administrator for 2021 while fully funding the position of city administrator in 2022. The addition of an administrative assistant to support the community in City Hall, a maintenance worker dedicated to the water utility and the utilization of interns for special projects in some departments. We have known, also known that for several years that our city municipal code and policies have needed some major updates to be in line with changes to state law and the community. While we have made significant progress, there are extensive updates that need to occur to bring our code in line that we will not have the bandwidth to complete internally. In that light, we are proposing a term-limited position of policy analyst to develop and bring to council numerous code revisions that are needed, many of which are long overdue. These policy updates will help reduce confusion, provide clarity and continue the efforts to bring our growing city up to speed. If approved, this will bring the city's total FTE count to 48.5 FTEs, which remains lower than prior to the Great Recession. During the same time period, Duval's population has increased from approximately 6,100 to almost 8,000 today, while gaining five new miles of infrastructure. As you heard earlier in the community development report, in 2020, all the community, the community development department has reviewed 215, oh, I apologize, that is not correct. I've had some problems with our updating here. It is a record year for the city with low housing inventory, continued migration to the Puget Sound area and shrinking household size. We do expect the trend of increased housing applications to continue at a moderate pace in line with our comprehensive plan for the next few years. Thanks to succession planning and the police department in 2021, we'll see and staff upon the planned retirement of police chief and the process to fill the position through promotion, allowing an entry level higher that will reduce overall costs. This budget continues to look forward to the future. In 2013, the previous mayor advised the city council that there was no longer room to house additional employees at City Hall. In the 2019-2020 budget, we proposed funding to develop a capital facilities plan which was approved. The first step in the process was having each city-owned building inspected for maintenance needs. The reports identified significant deferred maintenance and across-the-board need for building upgrades throughout the city. Due to several factors beyond administration's control, the capital facilities plan has not been completed and we are rolling over the funding into the new biennium. The ultimate goal is to provide staff and the community with a building or buildings that are safe, provide the space necessary to conduct city business and support the need for community meeting space. In the interim, we cannot wait to, to continue to wait on deferred maintenance. We have an obligation to our staff, customers and the taxpayers to make sure our buildings remain safe, adequate spaces for employees. In that light, we have proposed utilizing bond proceeds remaining from the Main Street project to support the release placement of HVAC systems that have far exceeded their intended life cycles, paint buildings, replace worn-out carpet, replace windows, fix roofs and modify the public works building to add space for the employees of the community development department. In addition to bringing the engineering permitting and community development teams together, this will provide the necessary space at City Hall to house the city administrator, mayor and the new administrative assistant. Still, as a city, we can no longer afford to sell and replace in buildings. The city department, police department facility was built with a 10-year useful life. Currently, the building is 16 years old and likely at the precipice of major investment to maintain its usability. In the 2019-2020 budget process, it was made clear that the city can no longer do more with less and noted that your elected officials have a responsibility to maintain the infrastructure we have. I am pleased that for the upcoming biennium, you'll be able to do more while executing the most fiscally sound budget in our history. This is a direct result of the experienced, thoughtful and dedicated staff team we have at the city. Every staff member was asked to participate in the budget development process and priorities were determined as a team. This upcoming year, our human services agencies servicing the valley will be hard-hit with reductions in funding for other, other agencies and donors just when they need it most. In that light, we have initially proposed $20,000 from the general fund to continue the human services grant program. And I fully expect with past discussions that the legislative body to increase that sum through utilizing a portion of our healthy general fund balance. We also have continued to budget for our community events such as summer stage. Community, community events are important for building and maintaining our culture as well as drive economic development on Main Street. At this time, we don't know if or when we will be able to resume these events, but are committed to making them happen when it is safe. An incredible amount of time has been put into further changing our internal budget processes, identifying core priorities and needs, continued identification of financial and time efficiencies and most of all, planning for the future. In the near term, the results of the workload analysis, capital facilities plan and implementation of new budgeting software will take the city to a place that we have previously not been ready or had the correct data to carry out successfully, long-term municipal financial planning. We know that despite our healthy revenue and record housing growth, the revenue and service structures of nearly all Washington cities is unsustainable in the long term. Over the next several years, the state legislature may or may not provide the tools necessary for cities to develop fiscal resiliency and move away from the fiscal cliff that has been created by multiple initiatives that have hampered the ability of cities to provide sustainable service. As a city, we can't afford to wait for solutions that may or may not suit our community. In that light, at the moment, the workload analysis is complete, capital plan done or running authorization to select a municipal financial consultant to develop a long-term financial resiliency plan for the city. This will create a strong policy and procedure recommendations for ensuring our ability to maintain service levels long-term. It is an exciting prospect and we are looking forward to the opportunity to identify solutions to the fiscal challenges we face. In closing, my team and I have worked incredibly hard to prioritize projects, focus on basics and plan for the future with the budget. We continue to be focused on doing what we can to beat our community's needs. We have made great strides in many areas and will continue to make progress in the coming biennium by being good stewards of taxpayer money, modernizing services and identifying new efficiencies. I would like to thank our amazing staff for your daily work and the effort put into developing this budget. A special thank you to our finance director and her team for their diligence and commitment to being smart with our money and helping to be closer to our financial and service goals. And with that, Ms. Mason, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen. All right. Can everyone see that okay? Are we good? I'll just start. Let me know if you can hear me. All right, so as the mayor said, this is a preliminary budget. Things are probably going to change a little bit. It's pretty fluid. But we'll just go over the main points tonight. An economic overview, which is very, very, just one slide, major changes. Excuse me, some carryover from the prior biennium or the 2019, 2020 biennium. One-time expenditures. We've got quite a few slides on capital improvement, some FTE changes and then just the big picture of revenues and the big picture on expenditure. So for the economic overview slide, this is just a sales news trend over the last 10 years and a forecast out to 2025. The orange line is King County and you can see that King County has taken a really big dip in 2020. While Duval is actually, we're still doing okay. We're at 5.5% over 2019 in, compared to 2019 year-to-date. And so we have planned, the King County forecast is planning a 6% growth in 2021 and a 7% 20 in 2022 and we're going to be conservative and just come in right under that. And then this does include sales tax for, for construction. So you can see this big jump in 2015 to 2016. That's what that is for Duval. And major changes, we've got two new funds. The Building and Permit Fund is where we've taken the Building and Permit revenues and expenditures out of the general fund to better track those associated revenues and expenditures. And then for the, a new fund called the Facilities Capital Improvement Fund, that's pulling all the capital improvement projects out of the Facilities Maintenance Fund and so we can better identify the sources to fund those projects and, and track them better. And then we're also, we renamed the Community Events Department, Community Services with costs related to human services, community grants, charges for facilities like the Red Building and Depot Building and then charges for vehicle replacement, mainly the, the mobile stage. Reporting changes in the general fund, there was a department called non-departmental expenditures. All of those expenditures have been allocated to different departments except for transfers. And then another big change is school impact fees. Those used to be reported in the deposit fund. So it wasn't really part of the city's budgeting process, but because of, of reporting requirements, we need to report them in the city's operating fund. So they're going to be reported in the Building and Permit Fund and that's just a revenue in, expense out. And cost allocation changes. We made some changes to the city's three internal service funds, how they charge for services. For the Equipment Replacement Fund will now include fuel costs. It's allocated by department, vehicle use by department. And then we have the goal of fully funding the future replacement costs. And the Information Technology Fund, we're charging by endpoint device rather than FTE because that's what takes up most of the time of our IT services. And then the Facilities Maintenance Fund, we're charged, charging by FTE allocation in building. And then, as I mentioned before, the CIP expenditures have been moved out of that fund. And then we were also, we reallocated the way WCI insurance is charged. It used to be to the general fund as a whole and now we're allocating those portions out to the departments depending on FTE, building and vehicle use. And then for legal costs, we are still keeping, we're having a legal department, but we are any utility fund legal cost will just be charged directly to those departments. And some of the carryover, the biggest carryover, there's not a lot, is information technology. It's that $25,000 that was budgeted in the general fund in this biennium is moved to the information technology fund for the financial software. The capital facilities maintenance studies is, is being carried over. And then also the sensitive areas mitigation project is hopefully going to be completed during this next biennium and that's also being carried over. And then one-time expenditure. So in 2021, as the mayor mentioned, we have a halftime city administrator that would be contracted. And then we also have $30,000 budgeted for the city administrator search. Hopefully, we could get a city administrator full-time at the start of 2022. There's also money for a workflow analysis because we are, was going to be part of the summer and comp study this year. But just due to a number of factors, that portion of the study is not going to be done. There's $80,000 for a policy analyst, whether that is a temporary position or a contracted position. $10,000 set aside. It's, it's been restricted for Willow's Art. It's a public art obligation. And then there's startup costs for the police camera program. The startup costs are $11,000 and then I believe it's $17,000 every year after that. And then in 2022, we have the start of the comp plan, which will cost a lot of money going on, but in 2022, it's, it's just the start of it, $25,000. In the Building and Permit Fund, there's the code enforcement policy and then there's also a Jeep that is needed by those employees to get around. And the Water Fund, the meter reading system that the mayor mentioned, most of the costs will be incurred in 2021 and the rest of the costs incurred in 2022. And then Equipment Replacement Fund, vehicles that will be replaced as a police SUV, two riding mowers or one, one in 2021 and one in 2022. A crack seal machine replacement. I'm not 100% that is or what that means. I think it has something to do with asphalt. And then a public works, or truck replacement in 21 and 22, 2022. And then for information technology, $215,000 for software implementation. And this is based on, this is based on a quote that we got. So it could be more, it could be less depending on how the requests or proposals go. And storage area and network equipment. Couple of police vehicle computers replaced in 2021 and then one in 2022 and then just miscellaneous smaller IT replacements. So here is the capital improvement projects. The facilities and then how they're, so here's the, the first quote on this expense. And then there's either source one, source two, and on the other side slides, you'll see three and four for some of them. But most of the projects in the capital facilities fund will be, we propose that they are paid with bond proceeds that are left over for the, from the Main Street project. The street project you can see has several different sources. A couple really big grants, a $400 million grant from TIP. The CDVG grant that the mayor mentioned for the 142nd sidewalk extension. And then we have the Transportation Benefit District and paying for several projects. Parks CIP is paid with, for, with scale projects. This happens every year with REIT Two. And then Park Levy and Park Impact Fees. And I will send these, I know I'm going through this really fast, so I'll send them, these slides out to anyone that wants them. Capital improvement projects in the sewer. I can't, couldn't even tell you what these mean. But they're mainly paid for with money transferred over from the sewer operating fund. And then the water operating fund, here's, this is the next, the system, water reading system that the mayor mentioned and a few other projects that are paying, being paid for with other, they're in the water CIP, so they're being paid for with the GFC funds. Or there is money transferred over from the water fund to the CIP fund to pay for these projects. And then a few storm improvement or storm drainage projects. So FTE changes. This is kind of small. I apologize, but unfilled existing positions in 2021 are the Parks Maintenance One and the wastewater treatment maintenance one. We'd like to fill those positions. New positions in 2021 would be water maintenance one, hiring a water maintenance one. And then three interns, and this is actually every year, three interns at just point one FTE, which equals about $5,000 per intern and they get a lot of work done. Changes to positions in 2021, the recommended changes would be admin two to admin three. Our admin two has been doing the work of the admin three since COVID started. And we would, there's so much more to do if she, you know, was leveled up. Assistant city engineer to city engineer, a public works maintenance crew person to maintenance two, the police recruit, which, you know, would be replacing the police lieutenant, and then the police lieutenant to police chief. And the interim building official would be a building official. Our out-of-class accounting associate who has been acting as accountant to accountant. And then our out-of-class billing, a utility billing clerk, who has been acting as a clerk slash accounting associate to accounting associate. And then in 2022, we hopefully will have a city administrator. That'd be an unfilled existing position. And then the new position of admin assistant one, someone who just can answer the phones and just do the very basic stuff. And then in 2022, also recommending changing our permit specialist one to a permit specialist two. And changing the building inspector job to doing 80% building inspector and 20% plans examiner. That's a lot. And here's the big picture. So this, one thing you, when you look at, I don't know if Jody shared the summaries with council yet, but if she hasn't, she'll be sending summaries that will have the revenue by fund, revenue by category, and revenue by department. So there'll be a lot of great information for you, and the same with expenditures. Just keep in mind that 2019 and 2020 added together are the biennial budget. So 2020 is simply the amended budget minus 2019. So the general fund, it looks like we're going to have 8% more in revenue than the prior biennium, but we were really conservative with our amendments. And so it's probably not going to be that as much revenue. It's not going to be 8%, it'll probably be like 6% or maybe a little bit less. And the contingency fund, we're not transferring any money over there. The street fund is getting less money because of the state shared revenues. And the general fund is also not transferring as much money in there, in part because some of the projects are now being funded by the transportation benefit district. It looks like the building permit department or the new fund is getting a ton more revenue than was budgeted in the past. But this is just the street impact fees or the school impact fees. Big Rock Ballpark Maintenance, we actually budgeted for about 70 or 25% in the first year of revenue, and then we upped it to 100. But we are also transferring in the park levy funds for the budget or recommending that they be transferred into Big Rock Park just for '21 and '22 till it can get back on its feet. Let's see, debt service is same old, same old. And the facilities CIP, this is just transfers in bond proceeds. And then a transfer in from REIT. And you can see REIT is higher than in years past, and that's mainly because of all the new constructions. So we have our old averages plus the new buildings that we, or residences that we hope are sold in the city. Street CIP is higher because of grants that are coming in and also transfers into that fund. So this is not all just revenue, it's transfers from fund to fund as well. Park CIP, same thing, transfers in. The water fund looks like it's a little bit lower. And that's, especially in 2021, is because there's about $60,000 in late fees that are not budgeted because we don't know when that mandate is going to be over. So right now, we don't charge for any late fees, or we can't charge for any late fees until the pandemic is over. Let's see here, sewer is just a little bit higher, storm drain just a little bit higher. And then again, the CIP funds are having transfers in till pay for the projects. And then if you look, sorry, just the equipment rental, IT and building maintenance fund, equipment or equipment replacement and IT fund, these two internal service funds are getting more charges for services from departments than in the past just so we can fully fund some items. And then it's expenditures by fund. So this is the same thing, you know, the 2020 estimate might be a little higher than anticipated, but what these two are, it's just the biennium and 2020 is what's left over after actual. Street is lower because things are being paid for by the transportation benefit district. You've got your new building and permit, and you can see that that's higher because of the street, of the school impact fees. A little lower cost in 2021 because we're not sure when the fields were open, will open, so costs are slightly lower. Hopefully, we'll spend the money from the sensitive areas mitigation and get that project finished. Here's just the CIP expenditures for the facilities. These are all transfers out right here, and then REIT one, REIT two, Main Street. The street CIP, that's just all the projects. Park same, the CIP same. Water is higher here because of the transfer out. It's making a pretty big transfer over to the water CIP fund to fund some projects. And then also the water operating fund has the meter project in it, the meter reading software project. And storm drainage is a little bit higher. And then you can see water CIP, these are just the CIP projects. And IT is the one that has, of the internal service funds, IT is the one that's going up. Where, as the mayor mentioned, we're still in the process of negotiating a contract or in our local agreement with Snoqualmie IT, but they are recommending another point six FTE, which would cost the city about $100,000 a year. And then this first year also has the software implementation costs for the financial software. So I know that is a ton of information. We'll get the department summaries to you, and you know, hopefully you'll have lots of great questions. I'm sure you will. And then when we do our department presentations, we'll make sure that you have the line item details so you can ask other questions. And then here's just our budget timeline. So here's today, the preliminary budget, presentations on the 13th. Hopefully, the public hearing on revenue sources, including the 1% increase in property tax on the 20th. Other department presentations on the 27th. This is kind of up in the air because it is, it's the election night. So there is some concern that people will not come to budget public hearing number one on election night. If that's the case, we'll just move this one to the 17th, public hearing number two to the first, and then we'll adopt the budget at the second meeting in December. And that was a lot. Are there any questions or comments? Done silence.
It's a lot to take in as, you know, preliminary budgets always are. So I'll start the round robin, but if we do get, going back and forth to individuals, we will start using the roll call method. So I did see Councilmember McHenry's hand.
I don't have a specific question right now, except for, in general, you mentioned emailing this out. I was wondering, are we going to start a folder like we did last time? And so that we have one spot to look at all the presentations and all the information?
Oh, that's a great idea. I can just put it on SharePoint. I will do that, thank you.
I would say please.
Thank you.
I can add them, we have a budget folder within the council packets folder that you guys already have the link to. So I will create a 21, 22 budget folder for you. We'll start throwing all of these documents and presentations in there for you.
That would be amazing, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember McHenry. And I think Councilmember Hoag had her hand up.
So I was just curious on one item. I noticed under police, you have a couple of vehicle purchases. And I'm just curious if in 2019 and 2020, I know we have, we budgeted for police vehicles, and I just want to know where they all purchased in that biennium? Or are these purchases ones that are rolled over that are?
And I believe that these are new purchases. I think we're going to add one more, but, oh, there's Police Chief Hurt, he can help.
Sure, hi, Councilmember Hoag. So we were able to get our final vehicle. We did locate that fourth vehicle for this current biennium. It should be here in the next couple of weeks. So the vehicles you're looking at now for the next biennium, the first one is to replace our Tahoe, which is a 2012 vehicle. And the second one in 2022 is to replace our next oldest SUV.
Thank you. Councilmember Lengel.
First of all, my favorite part about this budget is that we're moving to more of a budgeting technique that is by line of business. So I am super happy about that. I also am very happy about the extent to which the budget has incorporated comments from council over the last, I don't know, six months or so. So I wanted to give that a feedback. One question I had is that when we amended the budget not long ago, and we released money for two positions, and of course, those dollars are restricted. And so I just wasn't sure when I was looking at the numbers, how we rolled over. Obviously, we're not expending all of that money, given the timing of when those dollars were released. So this is just a clarification. So the money that was remaining from those positions is now being rolled over into 21, 22. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so it's not going to show up in the fund balance yet. And when you get more of the budget, you'll see that the fund balance is the, right now as it stands, is what's the fund balance was from the amended budget. And then as soon as we do our end of the year budget adjustments, we'll update that fund balance. So if the positions are released before then, then of course, they would be, that portion would be used up. If not, that fund balance is just going to move over.
Well. But we released the two positions, right? We just didn't release them, we released them as interim. Well, one's not higher yet, it was the building permit position. And I think Agenda Bill had, you know, projected expenditure this year of, you know, I don't know, $35,000, $40,000. So obviously, we're not going to spend very much of that money. In the case of the finance position, it went forward as an interim. So, and we're doing some out of class, as I recall, there was some variance.
There's two positions in finance that are getting out of class pay right now. The accountant and then the utility billing clerk, because they're both, they've taken on a lot of extra responsibilities.
Okay, yeah, so I, okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding how those amendments processed into 21, 22. Thanks. Happy, happy to see the line of business. Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation, Dana. Two questions. One, I don't know that everyone was aware specifically that the Main Street money, there was money left over, and that we're able to use that in other projects, which is great news because we have a lot to get done. Could you tell us roughly how much that was left over?
So I think it's going to be around $900,000 that's left over, maybe a little bit less than that. I'll have to go double check, but we, we did talk to the bond council. And so the bond transcript says that with council's approval, we can spend any leftover bond proceeds on capital outlay or capital projects. So we met with someone from Pacific Law, I want to say, yeah, yes, they were fantastic. And they said it just needs to be, because there's a three-year period where you kind of need to spend those bond proceeds, or there could be federal tax implications after a little while. So as long as we identify capital projects that we're going to spend the money on and then spend it, then we're in good shape.
My second question is just about the line items. This overview is just perfect for tonight, both mayor's message as well as looking at the data. But a lot of a budget, of course, is looking at lane items. Can you give us an estimate of when those lane items will be available for the city council to view?
Yes, I can. So we will try to have them ready for you by the budget presentations next week. So they're, they're in, they are ready. They just need to be formatted properly because we're not going to put them in Springbrook until everything's ready. So there is, it's our Excel spreadsheet line items. And I'll try to come up with a really good format to present them so you can have all the information that you need.
Great, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Councilmember Napland.
I also want to echo what Councilmember Lengel said about the reformatting and trying to break things up more in line of business. I think it's a great move. And the non-departmental, you know, when we were going through the submission to the audit and trying to back it up, add it back in, I think that's kind of the same type of thing. It was like, ah, the work you had to go through must have been horribly painful. So it sounds like that will resolve, is that right? Will that resolve some of that, or am I remembering wrong, or?
No, you're, you're not. It will resolve a lot of it, but we'll still, so we still have an overhead charge to the utility funds for like executives, some finance. So there is going to be that crazy weird journal entry that we have to do every year, which is what you have to do is you have to take the expenditure and you have to, you have to make an expense of the other fund. So we kind of reverse the transfers, the overhead transfer, and we make it an expense, we make salaries, salaries. And it's purely for financial statement reporting. Very difficult and annoying, but we'll do it.
Okay, well, I was hoping that would help with that.
Yeah, it will be smaller, it will be much smaller, so.
Anyway, I, I think it's great to break those expenses down into the departments. But the one thing that I think is a little bit challenging with all the restructuring of the budget is it's going to be very difficult to understand what has changed and how things have changed. And unless you get the details, it's, there's absolutely no apples to apples anywhere. Everything is swirled around and so different that honestly, I really am pleading that we could get detail as soon as possible just because it's, it's very different. I mean, if it was in the same format as it was before, I could get that line item detail and plow through it in a couple hours. It's a lot different. I think, Dana, you understand what I mean about how when things move around, sort of, that really understands, you know. Anyway, I do think it's an excellent move, the changes you made. But kind of the sooner we could try to digest it, since it is so different. I mean, there's just a lot of moving pieces here. I mean, especially, you know, reducing the, and I'm assuming the transfer, did you reduce the sales tax trans or the property tax transfer into the street fund? The split? Extra? It was the extra amount we normally transfer, just general fund?
Yeah, the extra amount that the generate to help cover operating costs. And to help cover CIP that was done in that operating fund.
So anyway, just kind of understanding, like, you know, what changed? And, you know, seeing things at the fund level and even the department level is going to be really hard to tell, especially if non-departmental all got shoved into departmental. I mean, it's just, it's really going to be hard to understand unless we can have a glimpse at the detail, preferably sooner rather than later. But I think that, you know, a lot of the changes I am really super excited about, and I have a lot of confidence in your department and your staff in putting this together. So, but I do look forward to seeing the detail.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We haven't heard from Councilmember Nikki. Did you have anything that you would like to add?
No, this is standard as usual when we go through the budget process. And, you know, I'm a big picture thinker, so I like this overview. And we've been through it for many years, so it was good. It was very clear, and I liked the slide presentation. And for me, I could see exactly what those changes were, so thank you. Thank you for your work.
And Councilmember Iyer, do you have anything? And Councilmember Iyer, do you have anything to add?
You know, I have some good questions I have, I mean, to put a pin in them are the, just right now, are the the bond over amount and the details on that. I mean, it sounds like we'll talk about that at length in another meeting. Then also understand the changes to FTEs and what that means. But I don't want to get into it now. We've still got a whole bunch. We've still got a whole meeting left, so let's do it.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Iyer. And those those issues will be discussed in the future budget meetings as well. And if you if you do have questions from tonight, feel free to submit them to me or Dana, and we will aggregate them and get answers to them at the appropriate time during the appropriate presentations so that we can help manage the staff workload right now. So thank you. And with that, we do not have any public hearings this evening, but we do have a closed session for collective bargaining under RCW forty two dot three zero dot one four zero B one zero four B for fifteen minutes. And with that, I just want to share some language regarding this, and we will be convening the closed session regarding collective bargaining. The closed session will last approximately fifteen minutes. For the purposes of the closed session, the council will leave the current publicly accessible Zoom meeting and will join a new Zoom meeting, the dial information for which has been separately provided to the council members. I will notify the city clerk if the closed session has been extended, and she will notify attendees in the publicly accessible Zoom meeting. The council will rejoin the publicly accessible Zoom meeting following the closed session. So with that, I will get on the closed session and we'll see counsel there. Mr. Remington, you need to hop off of this meeting and go follow the other link.
And Jody, just so you know, I'm not in that other one, so I'm gonna go grab a glass of water, but I'll be back in a few. I can't hear you, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'll probably do the same thing, so.
Yeah, so I'm presuming the fifteen minutes, I'll be back at ten minutes too, and then we'll see if they extend or anything like that.
Correct. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
For the record, I am going to pause recording to save on storage space in our server. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wyckoff. The closed session has been extended ten minutes. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wyckoff. The closed session has been extended an additional ten minutes. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wyckoff. The closed session has been extended an additional ten minutes. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wyckoff. The closed session has been extended an additional ten minutes. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wyckoff. The closed session has been extended an additional ten minutes at nine thirty PM.
Jody, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, everybody's taking a two minute restroom break, so everybody should be back in about within two minutes.
Okay.
And then I know that we officially need to vote on the nine thirty extension, so thank you.
Hey, Jody, thanks for being patient with us.
Thank Daniel, too. He's been sitting here waiting patiently as well.
Hey, Daniel, thank you for your patience.
No problem.
It was a good, good discussion.
Great.
Jody, we were having a little challenge with some of the mayor's connection. Does, do you think it helps if we don't have our videos on and give us more bandwidth or does that make a difference?
I don't know if it makes a difference if we all put ourselves on no video, if that would make a difference for the overall Zoom meeting. I think it's each individual person's connection and stuff. So if you're having a hard time, you take yourself off of video, but I could be wrong. I am not a tech person.
Are we at the ten minute mark to be able to reconvene?
You are.
Okay, we will reconvene the Duval City Council meeting at nine forty PM. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill twenty dash eighty one A Interlocal Agreement for Dispatch Services with the City of Redmond for discussion with the police chief.
And if you could just extend the meeting with a vote, that'd be great.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting?
Move that we extend the meeting.
Mike Remington, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Kerry Hurt, Police Chief. I'm gonna share my screen real quick just to pull up the agenda bill. Everybody see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna be very brief. This is a really repeat contract. The only change in the contract is under the section, under section six discrimination, the language changed briefly just to come into compliance with current federal law for discrimination. Other key facts, and I'm gonna skip kind of a lot of the services. If you have questions afterwards, please ask. We do have time. This is just the first touch. We have contracted with the City of Redmond for almost twenty years. They've been a phenomenal service provider partner. I can't say enough about them. Historically, you know, the dispatch contract every year has gone up by three percent. I spoke with the communication supervisor several weeks ago, recognizing the economic downturn that we're facing through COVID. We have agreed to a one percent for two thousand twenty one and a two percent annually for two thousand twenty two. A couple other points is there is another Valley City that receives the same services from a different provider that pays, I'm sorry, budgets five hundred and thirty five thousand dollars a year for the same service. And I want to show you, I wasn't just sitting at a negotiation table unarmed. I want to show you a different screen here real quick. Kind of give you some comparables of what's going on with other agencies around us. Let me post up here. Sorry. Sorry, I'm tired. Everybody see that? So this is what this is what some of the, these are all coalition cities, by the way, a part of the coalition, small police agencies. As you can see, that's the projected number for Duval on top. Several cities are using Norcom. One city is using Valleycom, both Norcom and Valleycom charge per call. And it's averaging about forty dollars to forty four dollars per call. Currently, Duval averages pre-COVID around thirty five hundred to four thousand calls per year. So under that Norcom Valleycom model, it would be about a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars for us to be a part of that that program. Enham Claw has their own dispatch, dispatch center. So of course they have staffing and all those other other things that they're paying for. The Valley City I spoke of earlier is Snoqualmie. They have a sixty forty split, meaning Snoqualmie pays sixty percent of that contract and North Bend pays the forty percent of that contract because North Bend contracts police services with Snoqualmie. And then Lake Forest Park uses Bothell as their dispatch center, and currently this year it's at a hundred and sixty two thousand. So I just wanted to show you that, you know, we still are in 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 a good position with Redmond financially. The other option is certainly going to be higher. So is there any questions or comments that anybody has? Diane?
So that has always been a delightful benefit over the years, and I'm really pleased at the work you did to get those percentages where they're at today for the for the future. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Henry, sorry.
I don't have any questions. Just want to thank you for all the research you did. It makes it really clear and easy to understand. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else? So I don't see any. So the recommendation is that council, you spend the next couple of weeks reviewing. If you have any questions, please reach out to me. I would ask that possibly at the next meeting, council is agreeable for the mayor to enter this agreement with Redmond for the next biennial. Did you have a question, Councilmember Iyer?
No, I think we should put it on the consent agenda, and if someone's got an issue, they can bring it up and take it off.
Thank you. Mayor? Are you there, Mayor?
Mike, why don't you go ahead and take over the meeting?
I'm back. I'm back. Sorry about that. Keep getting kicked off. So where where are we at, folks?
So Mayor, a suggestion from Councilmember Iyer that we move this the interlocal agreement for dispatch services to the consent agenda at our next council meeting, and then members can look it over. If they have a concern, they can raise it then. But otherwise, it seemed like folks were supportive of putting it on the consent agenda.
Excellent. Thank you. So moving on to the next agenda item, Agenda Bill twenty dash eighty two A Resolution for Utility Assistance. Ms. Mason, where did you want to handle this one?
Can everyone see my screen? Okay. So as everyone knows, the city was allocating the additional one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in CARES Act funding from the Department of Commerce for a total of three hundred and fifty two thousand eight hundred. Ninety five thousand in CARES Act funding has been allocated to human services thus far. And oh, and sixty two thousand six hundred has been awarded plus the five thousand dollars from King County Councilmember Lambert. And then eighty eight in of that CARES Act funding has been allocated to the Small Business Assistance Program, and seventy six thousand two hundred and fifty has been awarded. So there's an estimated one hundred and two one hundred and two thousand five hundred is available for additional assistance. So there's an estimated 102,500 is available for additional assistance. Council expressed interest in awarding funds to residents for utility assistance. Staff has come up with procedures toward the fund. Those procedures have been reviewed by the Department of Commerce. And there is now about 27,500 in past due utility bills that may be eligible for assistance. So I'll stop sharing my screen. And does anyone have any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions. Is, oh, Councilmember Iyer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
I'm losing my, my app. Yeah, I think we should just stick to the utility on this conversation and talk about the other thing, the other aspects later. I think we should allocate the 20, 28 grand to, for this purpose and move on. And if there's, if there's a multiplier, we can project it out to what it's going to be this month or something, I'm fine with that as well.
Councilmember Iyer, are you making a motion?
No, not yet. I guess I want to see what everybody else thinks and.
And to your point, we should be sticking to the Agenda Bills as the subject of the Agenda Bills. So point well taken. Councilmember Lingle.
I'm actually in support of this Agenda Bill. I've been watching the accounts receivable for utilities for a while now. And I believe that full 35,000, it's, it's an up to resolution. But I believe the full 35,000 will very possibly be needed within the contract period. So I'm in support of the bill.
All right. Councilmember Napland?
I'm thrilled about it. I will make a motion if I need to. I don't know if everyone else is ready. I see head shakes. Although I think we should let Councilmember Iyer make the motion. You make the motion, Councilmember Iyer. This was your, this was your dream.
I have to be able, I have to be able to find the buttons to make the motion here. Yeah, okay, I move that, that we pass Resolution AB 2082A Utility Assistance.
I second that.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Iyer, a second by Councilmember Napland. Any further discussion?
Really quick.
Councilmember McHenry?
Sorry, I saw that note on here in my, on, or maybe I'm, do we need to suspend the three touch rule or are we good?
I think we do.
Yes. Actually, you are right. So thank you about that. I didn't see the A on there when I was reading it. So let's back up and entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I move we suspend the rules.
Mike Remington, second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have any further discussion on the underlying motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-84A, Resolution for Clearing Grading Fee Permit Update for Discussion. Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So thank you for the meeting. It's been, it's been a good month, long but good. So this item is, and has been floating around trying to get the history as long as I could, longer than I've been back. So I have had a couple of good questions. If you had a chance to read through some of the language, questions that were, and I'm sorry to let the last of my other screens over here, sorry. Questions on calculating theory. So do we calculate the fee of volume based on cut it or fill amount listed? No clear direction in the actual sheet you see. So when they list a total, the total is taken as the fee. If they list a cut or a fill, it has seemed that that staff have used the larger of the numbers. So I guess point of clarification in my mind, probably should be maybe the combination of both. And I say that because cut and fill developers always try to balance a site. In Duval, our soils are so moisture sensitive, they rarely can stick around. With that said, you can remove a small amount to keep it as topsoil. But we have pretty strict standards, especially for the tree, tree code and what goes into tree wells for our landscape standards. You know, those are administered by the department. So it really is tough to keep a lot of material on site. Some of them can if they get to build in, in summer. So that's my, my thought on that. You have trucks coming to the site either way, whether they're hauling in or hauling out or just coming to and from, right? Sometimes they're empty. If they're just working on site, they've still got to go somewhere before and after. But then if they're hauling away and they are, you know, impacting the road and backing up to some of the policy discussion that I heard was hey, we should make sure that if heavy trucks are using the roads, we should try to collect and make sure that they're, we're assessing the fee relative to the, to that use. Not that we're going to fund our overlay program with grading, clearing grade permit fees, but make it reasonable. And the numbers that were provided, you know, we've had five to $800 grading permits that are, you know, pretty, pretty overwhelmingly large, like Paul Brothers, that's a giant site. You know, you're looking at 60 acres total and it's a lot of material. You, you can see Mount Duval from Big Rock. So. The other part of this strategy on the fee structure, and I put in the notes Kirkland is the baseline. I did find Marysville. Marysville's was just neater looking. They both use some sort of methodology based on what I can tell is the International Building Code. Our original fee was based on the universal, whatever the UBC was. That has been preceded or now preceded, succeeded by the International Building Code. The last table issued, and I heard Brian talk about it in his presentation on fees and then Councilmember Napland asked about the fees and recovery for building permits. Those fee tables are issued by the IBC. Those are current and still active. I cannot find a current IBC table for clearing grading newer than 2006. So I think the other folks in these other agencies have updated their numbers. However, they've chosen to update them. So with that said, the table of Kirkland, and then I found a newer one that was Marysville. The one question and comment I had pointed out was a good one where if you go through what I placed in the draft, again, I'm married to nothing. It's, it's completely in the air. When you stack the numbers, right, if you have 100,000 cubic yards for your, for your permit fee calculation, and then over that for every 10,000 cubic yards, there's a kicker, right? So it was $500 for the base and then $60 for each kicker. Well, if you add $60 to each 10,000 cubic feet, you don't get to the total of the next cell, which would have been, you know, the 100,000 and above. So if you go 10,000 to 100,000 and then 100,000 and over, if you add those numbers up, they don't match. So you could be heavily weighted in the, you know, $80,000 that pay more than $100,000 or vice versa, based on how the stacking was working out. So I think that's a good, certainly an approach we should, I would recommend that we just redo the numbers. There isn't an immediate hurry. I know the sooner the better to get this fee, one, off of my desk and two, implemented so the city can be charging an updated fee that isn't 1998 based, which we can turn around fairly quickly. But I think doing that and stepping it through, you know, where we were was for a larger plat to have a 1,500-ish dollar clearing grade permit fee. If that's still reasonable, regardless of how the steps work, I will make the steps work out so we can target that type of structure. And then hourly rate basis, there were some notes on just trying to confirm, hey, with cities covering its costs minimally. Our hourly rate table is my basis because, you know, speaking of legal, we want to have some assumption of basis that is tangible. You know, I have to guess on a lot of things with other agencies. I prefer to have a little bit more outline. So we're using the, the three or four folks who heavily are involved with clearing grade permits. Permit technician, myself, Larissa and Mr. Fisher, the superintendent. And that is roughly a 110 an hour rate once you average all of our hours. So I think that, that's my take on the fees. I'm not sure if there are any other questions. I can certainly run the numbers and bring back something that's stacked. And Councilmember Napland provided a very nice spreadsheet as she was in borrowing and trying to. I think she's got, must have a project coming up. She wants to make sure exactly how many yards she's going to be digging out of the backyard and know her feet. So she's got kids to put to work in COVID. So, but it was a great catch and yeah. That was really the only couple of comments we had.
Councilmember Iyer?
On, on this, you know, I think for me and look reviewing it, I think my main, my main concern at this point is that, that we update the fee in general to, for cost recovery. I think it's ambitious of us to, you know, note the impacts of the haul out on roads. But I think that's a much, much more lofty goal. And I think I'm comfortable with the direction of going and just want to see this updated to, you know, to cover, like you said, indicated, cover reasonable costs and, and then and, and account for that anomaly that you, you outlined. And then I, I think I'll be good. I, I, I don't want to, I personally don't think it's, I think it's too, trying to capture haul out and truck impacts on the road. I, I think that some of that might be too complex. So if we don't capture that, I'd be satisfied capturing updates, a reasonable update to get things to today's dollars. Thank you.
And we would index it for the other fees out of the building department, for the resolution at the end of the year.
All right, Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, poor Director Lenishewski was the victim of my spreadsheet. Sorry. Anyway, I just want to say, I wanted to double check. I, I did like the Muckletio one. I did see that one. Our, just, you know, we have to look at having reasonable fees. And you mentioned the IBC. And then there was another, a talk earlier that got this whole clearing and grading thing started was can we recoup for the damage to the roads, things like that. But, you know, even at the top level of what we're suggesting, what we could fill a couple of potholes. I mean, I, I agree with Councilmember Iyer that that might be a bigger discussion if we wanted to try to solve that issue. So, you know, if we could just get this reasonable and, you know, somewhat closer to some of our neighboring jurisdictions of what they've, you know, has been accepted by developers. We aren't doing anything super crazy. I'm good with that.
Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I appreciate all your work on this and the logic you just worked through made sense to me. And I, you know, thinking back to when we were talking about the TBD sales tax. I know this, you know, this program won't pay for any overlays, but it was kind of about doing our best effort to get everything that we could, you know, to work towards our roads. So I think this is a good step and I'm happy to see this come up. And in regards to a public hearing, so I'm assuming you asking it's not required, but I would always err on the side of just doing one unless there is reason to not. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Any other council members want to speak to this? Okay, so not seeing any. It sounds like there's general consensus of the direction. What I'm not clear on is if council wants to move this to be approved on the next agenda and whether or not council wants a public hearing. Again, my, my audio does keep cutting out, so I apologize if I can't grab everything. Councilmember Iyer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
I think we need, I think a public hearing is, I'm, I think it's fine with, I think I would recognize Councilmember McHenry's, or point and support that. I, I think we need to see the next draft. I think, I, I don't think it's going to be much ado, but I think council should have that opportunity to check that out. And I think we'll probably be able to move it through quickly, but I think we want to look at it first.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to this? And since I'm hearing none, I will assume that that is what Councilmember Iyer and McHenry stated is a general consensus of the body. And we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-86A.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We accidentally skipped 83A, which was the DMC amendment for the holidays section.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and go back to Agenda Bill 20-83A, ordinance amending DMC 4.12.010 holidays. Ms. Mason?
Good evening again, Council and Mayor. And so why change the DMC? Flexible schedules are currently being offered to employees, especially with the current COVID crisis. And DMC is not clear on how many hours an employee should receive if a holiday falls on their flex day off or if the holiday falls on a day that the employee is scheduled to work more or less than eight hours. So current practice per, per the city attorney, the default is the hour schedules, which results in some employees receiving more hour holiday hours than others and some less. So here's just a chart that shows you if you work four nines and a four, if for this current year, you get 93 hours. If you worked five eights, which is normal schedule, you get 96 hours. But if you work four tens, you get 120 hours. So the changes to DMC kind of rectifies this. It gives all employees eight hours of pay for each holiday and it allows employees that work more than eight hours a day to use accrued vacation or comp hours to supplement their holiday hours. It allows employees who work shorter days to bank unused holidays for future use. If a holiday falls on their, their shorter day off or, or one of their shorter days and allows unused bank holiday hours to be rolled over from year to year and be paid on termination. And then per DMC, employees receive two floating hours holidays a current year as current, or a calendar year. In current practice, the city does not allow unused floating holidays to be rolled over or paid out. But this isn't written in municipal code. So this, this would rectify that. And then changes also provide clarifications. Directors do not receive an additional hour of pay if required to work on a holiday. Are there any questions?
Mayor, for Tom Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, this looks really reasonable. And I appreciate Daniel's input on it. Do we have any employees that work 980 schedule?
Pardon me?
980, that's where they work nine hours a day and then they get, you know, one extra day off on the second.
I believe we have one employee that works that schedule. Is Laura still here?
Well, thank you Dana. This looks really good.
Chief Hurt, I believe, had a comment.
Actually, I had a question Dana. On your last, last bullet on your slide, you mentioned directors. Does that apply to all exempt employees or just directors?
Just non-director, just directors, I believe. Let me just double check. But I think we changed it to so it's just directors. So here, I'll share my screen so you can see it. So, so employees who are classified as FLSA not exempt and any FLSA exempt employees below the level of director are required to work on a holiday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any council discussion or questions on this? Councilmember Napland?
Super quick. Does this interact with any union contracts? Does it, I mean, obviously the union contract would supersede, but is, anyway, I just want to make sure we've reviewed it for, you know, how it might interact as well.
Yeah, the unions have both seen this contract. The police contract would supersede it because there is specific language in that contract about holidays. There isn't specific language in the Teamsters. There isn't specific language in the Teamsters contract.
Councilmember Hoag?
So real briefly, I just want to thank you for that presentation. I think that was really helpful, Director Mason. But what I wanted to say about this particular one, I appreciate that Councilmember Iyer wanted to help facilitate this long meeting and. Put some of these things on the consent agenda. But my, I'm just curious, because this is a change in code, can it go on the consent agenda? Or should it not? It can?
Yeah, it's, I mean, yes, we have done that historically as well, depending on what it is. But this is one of those things that's administrative and operational and doesn't impact the general day to day population. So to my opinion, if a council, if council wanted to move it to consent, that would be completely up to them because council chooses what goes on consent and what goes on the regular agenda.
But even at the first touch?
Um.
I'd be curious, but we don't have to go into it now.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's completely up to council. The reason why we have the three touch rule is because major changes to code, and I would consider this minor. Major changes to code used to come to the city council without even a staff report or a filled up agenda bill. And council was backed into a corner to approve them. So that's why we have the three touch rule. And, you know, it's completely up to council how you want to handle your business with these things. But, you know, it was the three touch rule was not put in place for simple operational things. It was put in place to stop big issues from not having any public involvement. Councilmember Iyer?
I think I'm comfortable. I mean, I, I think, I think council made a good call. It felt like they wanted to look at it. So I think that that's the appropriate answer. So I think that's the good answer. So. Uh, that being said, I move that we suspend the rules to pass this unless somebody want, doesn't want to. I'm totally fine if they want to wait another week.
I'll second that. All right. So Councilmember Iyer has moved, Councilmember second, Napland has seconded to suspend the three touch rule. Do you have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Does someone want to make a motion for the ordinance?
Um, I'm. Move that we pass a. Agenda Bill AB 2083, amending DMC 1412. The 10 holidays.
Second, Red Nikki.
Councilmember Iyer made the motion. Councilmember Red Nikki seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now we are on to Agenda Bill 20-86A Depot Deck Contract for Discussion and or Decision. Mr. Lenashevsky.
Good evening again, Steve Lenashevsky, Public Works. So the project that loves to be here. You recall, we had the contractor previously awarded in the range of $76,000. Sounds like due to COVID, they have had a unfortunate business situation and they had to pull, pull out, pull forward, as they said, on their business. So we worked with legal and released the contract, paid nothing out of pocket. So all we are down is time. And then, of course, the fact that we have to rebid. So we did put out the rebid. The bids are provided in the packet. We did do our due diligence on the bid. Low bidder, usually we do it on the bottom two. So with that said, we have provided recommendations. Shall we move forward to go with the second bidder? It was a $7,616 difference. Background and Q and As explain that, you know, the contractor who was a landscape contractor, won the bid was was certainly. Well and good at doing landscape based services. Some flatwork concrete was okay, but certainly not any sort of level of detail. Some cautionary tales came up and kind of the expectation of what we would do to manage him per se, as opposed to him being awarded a job following plans and fulfilling his obligations. So we had some suspect re-reviews that we worked with Daniel on. And came to the conclusion that we should make sure we are finding someone who can provide the work because not only are they doing a service that is more than landscape. They're also working on an aged structure that they have to contend with. And we don't need more problems than we already have. And it would be very simple to create problems. The second low is actually a contractor we have worked with. They recently just finished. Historic structure in Snohomish. They had nothing but praises. City Seattle is another agency in a school district. So there, they have handled older structures. They have had high ratings from their other agencies. So now the bottom line is essentially finding about 40,000 more than we thought we needed to have for the last go around. The only good news I can share on that is working with our esteemed finance director. I can tell you that with revenues receded into their REIT fund. Went into our trending ahead and the budget. Let's see. Budget was 100, 1.11 million. We expect to be about 82,000 above that. So that's good news. It's a resource available. We would always love to use it for something else. But should we choose to move forward, motion here, we can cover that in non impacting the budget. But again, shortening revenues that are coming in that weren't expected to come in as strong. That's where we're at. I'm not sure of an alternative at this point. Pausing that structure will do it very little good as far as sealing it up and establishing it in any near future. So it's a tough, tough call here. It should get done. We're all disappointed that it is going up every time we bid it. But there we are. I'm here to present that to you. That's my job. Questions, comments?
Councilmember Langill and then Councilmember McHenry?
Um, I I support this agenda bill. I I do have, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding something, though, that the, the language that. Grants you and Director Mason to select the funding source. Am I understanding the agenda bill correctly, that you would be picking between REIT one and REIT two? As opposed to any other funding source?
Yeah, I think what funds are eligible, and I only reason I selected that language is that was what the clerk had from the last go around because we needed an adjustment at that time, too. And the council just budgeted upon, I won't say, but Dana will find out where we should responsibly and reasonably charge that.
Yeah, I I just want to make sure we're using one time money for one time expenses, which has sort of become our mantra. So I I support the agenda bill.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry?
So obviously not what anyone wants to hear, right, with the money. But I would say that the experience you've described, excuse me, with the contractor makes me pretty confident that this estimate will be accurate. Oftentimes, you can get a low bid and then it ends up being way more, just depending on that experience level. So for those reasons, I'm comfortable moving forward and getting this taken care of.
Yeah, and we'll look for other avenues, too. They've already asked about materials and, you know, we expect steel. If aluminum would do that looks the same as steel, can we use that? So we haven't gotten in any clear direction on anything because we're obviously not in contract. But should there be opportunities to save, you know, we will do our best to try to do so.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers want to speak to this item? Councilmember Iyer?
Need a bigger screen. A move that we. Passed Resolution AB 2086A, Depot Deck Contract.
Um, this is a first touch. So would council want to suspend the rules first?
All right. Well, then I move that we suspend the rules. Three touches.
All right. Councilmember Iyer moved. Councilmember McHenry seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have a motion for approval.
A move that we approve AB 2086A Deck Depot Contract.
We have a motion by Councilmember Iyer, second by Councilmember Napland, to approve AB 20-86A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 20-78B, Resolution Amending the Small Business Grant Program Round Two for Discussion and or Decision. Ms. Mason, do you want to introduce this bill?
Sure. I'll just share this, the the slide that I shared for utility assistance. Let me just go to current slide. There we go. Can you see that? Okay. So as you know, the city allocated. 800 and almost $89,000 in CARES Act funding to the Small Business Assistance Program. 76,000 of that has been awarded. We're considering the first 11,974 to have been awarded to the, for the King County portion of CARES Act funding. That was given specifically to the city for small business, the Small Business Assistance Program. The question is, if council would like to award more funding to the program. Since, since we last met, the cities received 26 more applications. That totals $785,000 in requests, but one of those was for $560,000. If you take that one out, it's $225,000 in requests. 11 of the 26 requests have replied, have applied for funding before. And one of the, the ones that applied for funding had not received it the last round.
And I I will point out that we got the, the last of the applications yesterday. So there has not been an opportunity for Councilmember Langill and I to get together and review and reveal eligibility, et cetera. But at the last, we are starting to really run short on time with getting this money allocated. So I I would appreciate it if council would give a top number for total grant allocation for the Small Business Grant Program. And a ceiling for the amount of money total that you would like to, are willing to allocate. And then we will balance that with what comes out of human services and other discussions as well. Councilmember Langill?
Uh, yeah, I've been trying to track the money. We have a couple of pretty good spreadsheets that I pulled up. And one of the things in trying to reconcile it, this is just a, first is a question. If we have 117,600 additional and we, we think we have 102.5 available, that there's a $15,000 difference. The question is whether or not that is being earmarked for something that the city might need itself. Or has that been money that? I mean, I guess that's just the basic question. There's a $15,000 difference there. So have we committed that to something else? I guess you can't commit it because we just approved the contract. But what is that $15,000 set aside?
So are you talking about the difference between what we have? Between the amounts of CARES Act funding and, so this is, this is a number that Sean came up with that he thought would be available after we. Funded everything. So you know, all of the city's PPE, technology.
Okay, so what, so it sounds like the 15,000, I'm just looking at the the new contract amendment. I'm assuming.
Oh, I, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so we have a new amendment of 117,600. You think you're gonna, you know, you don't think, you you think you can have, you can make available through these programs, 102.5, that leaves 15,000. So that I'm presuming that that 15,000 is something that Sean feels will need to take the city side of the equation through the. Okay, so then going to the next, because we have the human services thing right after this. I expressed this. To Director Mason, is that, I don't, it's not clear to me what the human services agencies are, if they're bringing anything else forward. If they're not, then we have a resolution outstanding that has a floor of 50,000. We'll need to change that and release whatever they haven't asked for. I mean, in my world, you use it or lose it. I've encouraged them to get their stuff in. If they haven't gotten it in, I think we just have to move forward. Because as the mayor said, we have need out there and we need to make decisions about that. So we have to remember that that 50,000, if it's, I think the last go around, there was approximately 35, 36,000 that had been awarded. If nobody's asked for anything more, then we have some money to reprogram under the Human Services into business grant.
And so on that note, Councilmember Langill, if I may, there is one human service agency that would be new to the equation. That I have not been able to have a conversation with. It's been my scheduling challenge. And I'm hoping to actually finally get the opportunity to talk to them tomorrow. So that might be a new agency that is able to provide assistance to our community and have potentially, I I really don't think it would be 50,000. I think it would be much smaller than that. But again, since the funds all have to have been used by November 30. I think the dollar amount is going to be much smaller. And I know that from talking to human service agencies, they've pretty been pretty much tapped out with what they can. What they can spend on CARES Act related expenses before the deadline. So that's why we're not hearing from those other agencies.
And that's fine. I'm, I'm perfectly fine. If we don't have $50,000, which is the floor in the resolution. We can reprogram it at the next council meeting. It's got to go out the door. And if there's need in the business community, we should take that into consideration. The one thing that was in the reconciliation sent out by Director Mason had been brought up in a couple of other council meetings, has to do with the issue of facilities. And I've, I've shared some of my concerns about air filtration. I've done some research on that as well. The one thing that I, it's not right now on the, on the table, but as we fill in these blanks. I'd like to be sure that there is at least some money there to do technical assistance. Around air filtration. It's when you adapt an old building, the mechanical engineering side of it can be very delicate. And I did review the contract language. I also looked at our past emergency resolutions. If it doesn't, if it turns out to not be COVID eligible, that's fine. I am just very concerned. There is more and more CDC advisories around the airborne contaminant of the virus. And I I just think we have to move forward on looking at City Hall and the police station in particular. We don't really know the efficacy of individual air filtration. And I I think it could end up being more complicated. Let me, I just want to really emphasize, I do not expect in any way. That COVID money would go to replace a furnace system or whatever. I I am concerned that we get a good number on COVID specific filtration. So that it can feed into the 2021, 2022 budget. And we have a really good idea what we'll have to do. They, there are special specifications when you have those types of filtration systems. And I think we need some good advice about that. So I I'm, I'm making a plea, really, because I'm so concerned about our employees. I think we all know people that have been affected by COVID. I know we have experienced colleague that passed away. It's, it's just such a very serious thing. I don't want our employees or the public to not get the very best filtration that we can possibly. Have designed for us. And I, again, I'm not asking for design. I'm just asking for the technical assistance to look at what that might look like. And it probably should be a mechanical engineer so that we have done the high. And it probably should be a mechanical engineer so that we have done the highest quality due diligence. So I don't know what that amount of money is. We should talk about it in our committee. I'm not talking about $20,000 or anything like that. I'm just very concerned about the air filtration.
So Mr. Lenishewski, we've had quite a few internal conversations about this issue and the challenges with getting that specific portion out. Do you want to share what Mr. Tozer has spoken about? Or do you feel prepared for that? Because this, you know, this really is definitely his bailiwick. I've had discussions with him. He does not believe that we can get this done in time to get the CARES Act funding, get it CARES Act funding eligible. And conversations with others have also shared that the expectation would be that you would have to actually evaluate all of the HVAC systems in order to get that component, which would be a double cost. Chief Hurt, and then Mr. Lenishewski.
I just wanted to add on to what Councilmember Langle was saying. Just so everyone is aware, I did have at least one employee complain about the air quality, specifically when we had the high smoke volume. I did have to send them home because it wasn't worth the risk for me as an employer for day paid. I have purchased six air purifiers that have been spread out throughout the police department to try and help with that right now. Heat Transfer has advised that the HVAC system in the PD was put in and designed to bring the air in from the outside. So when you have that high smoke volume, it's bringing that smoke in. They have shut those off until we get through this wildfire season. But I just wanted you all to be aware of that. Thank you.
I think, and I think one of the things to add is that we did put in the budget using bond proceeds to replace the HVAC systems. And all it would take was the council action to move that forward. And those systems can be replaced. Steve?
I think you nailed it. And I know Daniel's up to speed on the COVID timing. I am less up to speed on COVID timing and sponging those resources. But I do know, I mean, there's two separate things. Irregardless of the COVID funding, if there's a direction to move forward to get that assessment done, then there's a direction to move forward to get the assessment done. And then if there's the understanding that, hey, it will or won't, or may or may not be eligible for COVID recovery, then, you know, we have a bill to pay. It's, I can't imagine it's absorbed, you know, an exorbitant amount of money. But it might be good information to have irregardless, so.
Yeah. And as an administration, I mean, that's, that has been one of our concerns from the get-go before more and more evidence has come out on the airborne transmission. In fact, CDC reversed course yet again today, or maybe it was yesterday, and clarified that the virus is airborne. So as things evolve, we're working to be as flexible as we can to make those changes. Councilmember Napland?
I'm in support of getting that analysis done as soon as possible. I completely agree with Councilmember Langle, and especially hearing Chief Hurt, what he shared. I think we should expedite that, whether or not it gets reimbursed or not. Either way, I think we should move forward. The final thing is, I think we need to get this money out the door. The businesses here are our future. You know, our tax revenue going in, you know, we need to keep these businesses alive. So I, I don't know, just look at how much we have left. Where do you think we might potentially have Human Services money that, you know, someone needs and can use? I'd say the rest should go out to the businesses as soon as we can. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of need.
Yep, there is. So one of the other things, Councilmember Iyer?
Just for the interest of time, we need a number, and we need a ceiling for the business. What I heard amongst all that was that the available need for, for Human Services has been exceeded, or potentially exceeded. So the remainder of this money that we have, I mean, the one place we have to go with it is the business community. So I would say allocate up to 100% if that's possible. My only issue with that is when you start getting reimbursement requests of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, the potential for issues, you know, the potential for fraud, just to be blatant, is there. And, and, you know, clearly, if it's, you know, it's easier to vet a $500 request. So, you know, that's another thing I would have, you know, advise caution. And I would do that gleefully because I'm not involved. And, but clearly, there's no capacity, or clearly, the capacity question with Human Services is answered. So therefore, I think allocate 100% to businesses if it's available appropriately so. And then sure, evaluate the HVAC. I think we should stay focused on the.
So Councilmember Iyer, just a point of clarification. The application process does require documentation and certification through affidavit of not double dipping and that they haven't gotten reimbursed for those expenses before. So that takes the liability off of the city. So the next thing we need to do, and so that risk is minimal to the city. It's been reviewed by legal, et cetera. The next decision that we need to have on this is what the top ceiling for total grant allocation per business that council is willing to support. At the last meeting, I suggested between $10,000 and $15,000. And we need to get to a final number so that we can be fair to the grant applicants.
I say $15,000.
Okay. Are there, let me just ask, in the interest of the time, are there any objections to the $15,000 cap or up to 100% of remaining CARES Act funding going to business grants? Not seeing any objections. Councilmember Langle?
I just wanted to say, just to complete my little math thing here. It, now that we've committed $35,000 to utility, and given what Sean is projecting for the city, we would be looking at distributing around $67,500, not counting any reprogramming from Human Services. I thought maybe Director Mason might want to give me a quick confirmation on that. But the need is definitely there in the business community.
That's what I came up with also. And we still have another $11,000 from the last round of Small Business Assistance.
Right, so it sounds like we have consensus on the ceiling and the maximum grant amount, which does need to be added into the resolution. So if there is no further discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion with those changes for approval. Councilmember Langle?
I make a motion that we approve. I'm getting my Agenda Bill right, AB 20-78B.
Second, Napland.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but we still need to, in the official motion, set those limits. So do we have an amendment to the motion for that?
We want to do, I'm sorry, didn't raise my hand.
Yeah, Councilmember Langle?
Do we want it to be wording, or do we want it to be an amount of money? We've already got the county money taken care of. We will still have to deal with the reprogramming of Human Services.
Correct. And I think we all have a strong understanding of where we're going with this. In the resolution for this grant program for Small Business Assistance, there is a blank under Section 2 that authorizes up to a specific dollar amount. We need, and that filled in with the total maximum dollar amount. And then we also need a specification on the maximum grant award, for the record. Councilmember Iyer?
I move that we amend AB 20-78B with, can we use 100% remaining? Or we have to state a specific dollar amount for the total?
You can say up to 100%.
Up to 100% remaining CARES funding. And to place the limit to $15,000.
All right. Do we have a second on that amended motion?
Second, McHenry.
All right, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And do we have any discussion on the underlying motion as amended? We have a first and a second on the floor. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 70, AB 20-79B, Resolution for Additional Human Services Grant Funding, for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Mason?
So, good evening again, mayor and council. I'm not sure what we want to do here, because this was for the Human Services funding. So do we want to reduce the amount? Or I'm assuming we don't want to add any more to it?
In the ordinance, it is blank. And so that was one of the decisions to be made. My suggestion would be an up to amount, because we don't know what, for those, that agency that may be eligible, what their need is. Because you don't have to, because you don't have to allocate all of those funds. If you do an up to amount, you still can't spend either, with either program, you can't spend more than the amount that we're, we've received. So I think an up to amount would be appropriate, knowing that we may be coming back to reallocate some of that funding.
So right now, there's $95,000 in CARES Act funding allocated to Human Services, plus the $5,000 from King County, Councilmember Lambert. So 95 minus the 62600, that's actually CARES Act. That's $32,400 that's left over from the original amount that hasn't been allocated. That hasn't been awarded, I should say.
Councilmember Langle?
I'd like to suggest that we not take action on this until we sort out. That gives you the opportunity, mayor, to tie down what this additional agency might need. It gives us an opportunity to make sure we rescind, if needed. It may be that the $50,000 is plenty, in which case this is a zero. But if we do those two things in tandem, then I don't, I think we can be done tonight, I guess. Is also something I'm thinking through. But that way, we at least have clarity around it. And, and quite frankly, we've allocated quite a bit of, an unprecedented amount of money for Human Services. I always support Human Services. But if they haven't come in, I mean, I think that that's a telling piece of the information. So I, I'm thinking that maybe we should just wait on this one.
Okay, is that, can, with head nods, is that good for council? And thank you, and Chief Hurt, you had something to share?
So a quick question and comment, I guess. Before we allocate all this CARES Act funding, I would appreciate maybe doing an inventory. Maybe Sean can provide an inventory of our current PPE and estimates of what we may need as a city before we allocate all this money away. And maybe it's, maybe we just earmark $5,000 for future city PPE needs or something like that. Unless, Dana, is there money in an emergency management fund for those things? If we allocate all this CARES Act money?
Well, first of all, Chief, that was, the emergency manager has been asked to do that. So that's part of the planning process for the remaining funds. And if the allocation is up to that amount, it does not preclude us from utilizing those funds. If Sean says a week from now that, oops, we really need more of this, we need to get it. That just changes our final allocation amounts to the grants. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we've got head nods to move on. So that's just fine. And we'll, we do have an executive session to end the meeting. And so the city council will convene an executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I, Potential Litigation, 42.30.1101D, Negotiations of the Performance of a Publicly Big Contract, and 42.30.1101B, Lease or Purchase of Real Estate. The executive session will last approximately 45 minutes. For the purposes of the executive session, the council will leave the current publicly accessible Zoom meeting and will join a new Zoom meeting. The dial-in information for which has been separately provided to council members. I will notify the city clerk if the executive session has been extended, and she will notify attendees in the publicly accessible Zoom meeting. The council will rejoin the publicly accessible Zoom meeting following the executive session. Action, including but not necessarily limited to adjournment of the regular council meeting, will take place in the open Zoom session following the executive session.
Mayor, just real quick, do we want to maybe make it a shorter timeline? And then we can always extend, just so that we don't guarantee 45 minutes?
Yeah, this was what the clerk had provided. I think, I think we should do 15 minutes and go in increments of five because we're getting close to approaching the 11 o'clock hour. So that would be preferable, actually, if we can do that. Chief, Clerk Wykoff?
I just had a quick question, because that is the amount of time that was published on the agenda. So does council have to make a motion to amend the agenda to reduce the amount of time? Or does, is that not necessarily the important part?
Yeah, no, I mean, any timelines or anything like that are just estimates, and the agenda is preliminary. It gets adjusted on the fly all the time.
All right.
Here, Mike Remington?
Yes.
Do we all need to log back in on the Zoom meeting just for the adjournment? Or is that something you can do for us?
If there is action to be taken, we all have to come back. I would assume, Daniel can answer, Mr. Kenny can answer this, but I would assume if there's no action, I should simply be able to adjourn the meeting by coming back in. But Mr. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think we do need a quorum to come back, because we do have schedule to just kind of complete the agenda. I mean, it doesn't sound like there'll be much, but we just need a few of you to come back for a minute.
Perfect. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the other meeting.
For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended 15 minutes at 11 p.m. For the record, this is City Clerk Jody Wykoff. The executive session has been extended an additional 15 minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional 15 minutes.
Thank you for being patient. I'm really.
Thank you for being patient, I'm really tired.
Yeah.
I'm not used to being up this late.
This is one of the longest days I've had for, in a while, and I've had lots of long Are we missing anyone? I think we've got everyone. All right, I'd like to reconvene the Duval City Council meeting at eleven fifty-four PM from executive session. And with that, council member Iyer?
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase-sale agreement consistent with our discussion in executive session.
Second, McHenry.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Bye.